I'd like to call the City of Muskegon City Commission meeting for March 22, 2011, to order. I'd like to welcome Pastor Josh Gier from Lakeside Baptist Church to lead us in prayer to be followed by the pledge. Thank you, everyone, for standing. Pastor?
Thank you. Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for the gift of this day and for all of the joys and blessings that it brings. We thank you for the city of Muskegon, for the people who live here, and for the multitude of ways that you show us your grace, mercy, and love each day. Thank you for raising up leaders in Muskegon who care deeply for the city and who desire to lead with wisdom and knowledge. We ask you now to govern the conversation and thoughts of these leaders as they meet together, guide them to the truth, and help them to know how best to govern this city. Help them to know to make decisions to honor you and to carry them out in ways that demonstrate a genuine love and concern for the people of Muskegon. And, Lord, help us all remember that every good and perfect gift is ultimately given to us by you, our loving heavenly Father. Thank you for granting these leaders wisdom as they meet, and thank you for your goodness, your love, and your many blessings. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Here.
Commissioner Carter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Commissioner Shepard?
Here.
Commissioner Spataro?
Here.
Mayor Warmingston?
Here.
Commissioner Waringo?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda read, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request: To approve minutes of the March 7th Commission Work Session Meeting and the March 8th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Please proposal for MAC kiteboarding at Piermarquette Park, Public Works. Summary request: Staff is asking permission to enter into a three-year contractual agreement with Steve Negan of MAC kiteboarding for kiteboard school and shop in Piermarquette Park at 1955 Beach Street, former old brown brick beach house building by filtration plant. Staff recommendation, approve the request. City MDOT agreement for the reconstruction of Temple Street, Young to Laketon, engineering. Summary request: Approve the contract with MDOT for the reconstruction of Temple Street from Young to Laketon, and approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract. Staff recommendation, approve the contract and resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign both. City MDOT agreement for the reconstruction of Getty Street, Laketon to Evanston, engineering. Summary request: Approve the contract with MDOT for the reconstruction of Getty Street from Laketon to Evanston, and approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Staff recommendation, approve the contract and resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign both. Amend Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances for Fire Prevention and Public Safety. Summary request: The Director of Public Safety is requesting that the City Commission amend Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances concerning fire prevention and protection. This includes the adoption of the 2009 International Fire Code. Staff recommendation, approval of the request.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda read. Are there any items you'd like to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Carter?
Seeing none, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
It's been moved by Commissioner Carter, supported by Commissioner Waringo, to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmingston?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Unfinished business, item A, please.
Second reading amendment to the zoning ordinance medical marijuana facilities planning economic development. Summary request: Staff initiated request to amend Section 1500, principal use permitted of Article 15 I-2 general industrial districts of the zoning ordinance to allow medical marijuana caregivers facilities as the principal use permitted in an I-2 general industrial district. Staff recommendation to approve the zoning ordinance amendment. Committee recommendation: The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the request at their February 10th meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance for medical marijuana facilities as described.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Waringo, to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance for medical marijuana facilities. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
No.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmingston?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Second reading amendment to the City Code of Ordinances Medical Marijuana Regulation and Licensing, Planning Economic Development. Summary request: Staff initiated request to amend Chapter 34, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances to regulate and license certain aspects of medical marijuana cultivation, use, and distribution. Staff recommendation to approve the ordinance amendment.
Thank you. Commissioner Carter?
Motion to approve the second reading of the city ordinance for medical marijuana regulation licensing.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Carter, supported by Commissioner Spataro, to approve the second reading of the amendment to the City Code of Ordinances Medical Marijuana Regulations and Licensing. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
No.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmingston?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, item A, please.
Contract for assessing services, finance. Summary request: Since 1999, the city has contracted with the Muskegon County Equalization Department for assessing services. The closure of the SAPI plant, together with general tax-based loss change, the city is required to assess her status level from a Level 4 to a Level 3. This caused staff to explore whether taking the assessing function back in-house might be cost-effective. However, after in-depth discussions with the county, we have reached a new five-year agreement that continues the current intergovernmental service model while achieving the city's cost goals. The proposed agreement is presented here for your consideration. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to execute documents with Muskegon County for continued provision of assessing services.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Galvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we authorize staff to execute documents with Muskegon County for continued provision of assessing services.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Galvin, supported by Commissioner Carter, to authorize staff to execute the documents with Muskegon County for continued provision of assessing services. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. I fully support this, but I do feel it's appropriate to disclose that I am employed by the County of Muskegon, but it is with a different department, and I do not believe there is a conflict of interest unless the attorney tells me otherwise.
You're okay.
Thank you.
I'd just like to commend staff for taking a look to see what would be prudent and proper for the citizens of the city of Muskegon, and at the same point in time, I'm happy to see that working together with other governments in the community saves all of us a little money and provides good services for our citizens. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmingston?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
2011-2012 Healthcare and Wellness Program Finance. Summary request: It is time to renew the city's healthcare coverage for the 2011-2012 year. Renewal premiums for the city's current healthcare program have come in at $887.88 an employee per month at an 8.83 percent increase over the current rate of $815.85. Last year, we experienced a 9.45 percent increase. In comparative terms, the rate increase is fairly moderate. Many employers are experiencing double-digit increases partially attributable to coverage enhancements mandated by the last year's federal healthcare legislation. For 2011-2012, the city will continue to pay HRA deductibles for employees who complete the four-step wellness initiative prior to April 30th. Nonparticipants in the wellness program will pay the first $500, single thousand-dollar family of a deductible. Staff is also focusing on increasing the premium co-pay in employee negotiations. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to execute documents with Priority Health to renew healthcare coverage.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Galvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we authorize staff to execute documents with Priority Health to renew healthcare coverage.
Support. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Galvin, supported by Commissioner Carter, to authorize staff to execute the documents with Priority Health to renew our healthcare coverage. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Warmingston?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, please.
2011-2012 CDBG Home Recommendations, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request: To accept the recommendations of the administration and Citizens District Council in regards to the 2011-2012 CDBG home anticipated entitlement. The commission is scheduled to make their preliminary decision regarding the 2011-2012 CDBG and home allocation entitlement during the city commission's meeting scheduled for March 22, 2011, with a public hearing of the same. Staff recommendation to approve the acceptance of the recommendations of the administration and Citizens District Council and to make their preliminary recommendations for publication. Committee recommendation: The Citizens District Council has made their recommendations.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the CDBG home recommendations as provided by administration.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Shepard, to approve the acceptance of the recommendations of the administration where there's a conflict. Of the administration preliminary recommendations for publication, so you left out the CDC? Do we have the publishable?
The recommendations as presented, I guess maybe is the right way to put it.
To approve the acceptance of the recommendations of the administration and Citizens District Council and to make their preliminary recommendations for publication. Well, that's why I asked the question. I'm asking you for clarification, because here's what it says. Onita?
Can you help clarify? The recommendation is to approve the recommendation from the administration and the CDC, but they're different.
They are different, and so what we're asking you to do tonight is to look at both of those recommendations and to give us your preliminary budget, what you would like for us to publish.
Okay. So my motion was to recommend the adoption of the administration recommendations. That was my intent when I made that motion.
Of the administration? Did you say administration? Yeah, you said administration. So you're changing that to not include the Citizens District Council?
Because they're different.
All right. And who supported it? Are you supporting that same motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Commissioner Shepard. All right. So the motion, again, was to approve the acceptance of the recommendations of the administration and to make their preliminary recommendations for publication. Thank you. Okay. Is it... Onita?
Yes.
It says on here, "with a public hearing of the same," and I don't see a public hearing on there, so I don't know if we presented...
We had a public hearing two weeks ago.
Well, the public hearing, we thought, would be tonight, so that you could hear from some citizens based on this, or we could have the public hearing after the publication.
Yeah, we didn't... This wasn't...
Yeah, when it's published, it's a public hearing, so this would have to be two weeks. We'll have to make sure.
Okay. So that's...
But there was a public hearing on March 8th, if I remember correctly, if I look at the minutes, I believe.
March 8th? We didn't hear about figures, did we? Yep. I remember having that.
That was for the consolidated plan.
Yeah.
So the consolidated plan is out for review and currently still is. It's 30 days for that particular document.
So we'll be making notification for the actual public hearing for this for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. But we will, for those of you who are here, still to come. Thank you, Onita. Commissioner Carter?
Just make sure I'm reading this right. Rental rehabilitation. What... Explain that. Maybe I was thinking that was something different. Is that houses that we...
We actually enter into an agreement with the property owner of a rental property. Landlords are privy to this grant. It's a 50-50 share. They put up an application fee. We then require that there be lead testing in the house. We also require that, in order for us to proceed, we have to agree, both of us, that the lead will be abated from the home. So there will be no remediation of lead, but we will get rid of it completely and then get a clearance report, and then proceed on with whatever the renovations are of the property owner. So it's... At that point, it's a 50-50 shared program, and it benefits those low-income families who have to rent before they can purchase properties and making those properties safe for their children.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. I know in years past, part of this allocation has gone to community organizations, all of whom do excellent work, but I think it's incumbent upon everybody, both on this side of the dais and out in the audience and who's watching on TV, to recognize the fact that the best-case scenario with community development block grant funding for this fiscal year is a 25 percent cut, because that was what was proposed in the president's budget, and the worst-case scenario is 100 percent cut, because that was what was proposed in the House of Representatives' proposed budget. So I'm just pointing out that we may be wrangling over dollars that may never actually show up. So I think keeping the dollars internally, as we've discussed previously the last couple of years, to finance the programs that have proven themselves to be effective is what we ought to do while the money is still available.
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioner Shepard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to reinforce that statement. Just getting back from Washington, DC, it is very unbelievable, but we don't need to depend upon CDBG a lot now, because there's been cuts, and we are in the process of negotiating with some of our representatives there to see if maybe they will relieve a little bit more rather than we'll never get what we got now. But my question to them when I was there, if we could just stay where we are, we would be satisfied. And so we're working on, and I think I talked with you, about putting together a program that they can actually see the benefits. That's what we got to show. We got to show who benefited and how it was benefited, and I think we do have some good confirmations of those, and I thank you for taking that time out. But right now, for those out there in the community, you know, you have to remember, community block grant funds is almost at an end, because the representatives at the high level is not looking out for us at that level. Thank you.
Commissioner Carter?
Just a little clarification of my part. I'm just a little lost today. Were we just voting on the home portion of it and not the community about... We're just voting on the home portion of it. Were we voting on the whole thing?
Just to clarify.
Just to clarify.
Is there any other... Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the commission. You're probably thinking he's back.
Nice to see you.
Thank you very much. And for the record, my name is Dan Bonner. I'm a proud City of Muskegon resident at 1652 Nelson in the City of Muskegon at 49441. And I'm here once again to address what is becoming a more desperate issue, I recognize both for the city and for legal aid of Western Michigan, of which I am the managing attorney in Muskegon. We have for years enjoyed a wonderful relationship with the city, particularly with the Housing Code Enforcement Bureau and the Inspection Department of the city, and we would like to continue that into the future. We're faced with... On January 1st, I had to release an attorney in our office, so now we're down to less than three attorneys covering three counties in Western Michigan. Obviously, I want to keep my remarks focused on what we do for the city of Muskegon, because that's what's pertinent here. In previous years, we've enjoyed funding for both our work on foreclosure, defense, and prevention, and our work on eviction defense and addressing substandard housing in the city of Muskegon. Last year, we enjoyed, and I'm very grateful for, a $7,000 grant in the two programs for the work that we do in those areas. I understand this year that there is some discussion, some serious discussion, about cutting that funding by 100 percent. I understand further that the Citizens District Council, who do a tremendous job in this regard and with whom I appeared a couple of weeks ago, has at least recommended that we receive $3,500, which would be a 50 percent cut from last year and down from $12,000, of course, which we enjoyed not too many years ago. At this point in time, considering the fiscal situation, I would be grateful if the city commission would approve the Citizens District Council recommendation for legal aid, so we can continue our work. I don't want to take up any more time, but for... Just to show you, one housing foreclosure case I did for a lady whose husband died in January of 2010 here in the City of Muskegon. She was a widow. She said she'd be with me, but I found out about this on very short notice this afternoon. But I have in here... She was being... After her husband passed of cancer, her name wasn't even on the mortgage, and they wouldn't... Chase Bank, Chase Home Finance, would not even speak to this lady, so she was caught between a rock and hard place. I instituted... It's interesting, they returned my phone calls, and they... After 16 letters to Chase Home Finance representatives in three states, Texas, Arizona, and Columbus, Ohio, I was finally able to not only reinstate her mortgage, renegotiate the terms of her loan, and also, on March 1st of this year, I received a letter from Chase Home Finance that said, "Name change completed," and we finally closed that chapter, and she is able to live in a home that her and her husband bought decades ago, and we salvaged that mortgage. The reason that I give extra attention to these kinds of cases is because I know each year I need to come back here and justify the existence of our continued funding in this, and I... Quite honestly, I probably would have represented this lady without CDBG funding. And... But it certainly helps, especially in this economic climate, in which we are receiving threatened cuts of 17 percent right now at the federal level. That's just for the current fiscal year, and we're partway through that, and that's why we cannot fill the attorney who left our office on January 1st. So I would ask the city commission to, maybe even at this point in time, beg would be even a more appropriate word, for your gracious consideration for recommending the approval of the Citizens District Council grant that legal aid continue with the funding of $3,500. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Thanks for the work you do also.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
This isn't a public hearing, but was there anyone that came here tonight that also wanted to discuss this subject?
One in the back, please.
I'll try to speak up, but I just had surgery, so it's a little...
We can hear you, Pam.
Okay. The only area that we really wanted funded this year was the CBOs. And we're talking $21,000 from the siding program. We're talking maybe four or five individuals that would benefit by having their homes sided versus several thousand people taking care of with the $21,000 that the CBOs do. The Red Cross transportation for a year, one individual, costs $10.75 for a medical. City of Muskegon figured it was $133.80 per person for same, you know, same year period. I know we don't have a lot of funds, but I can't see that these programs get cut. They're valuable to a lot of people. What Dan does is keep people in their homes. I hope the commission can see the wisdom of just funding the $21,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. And thank you in the committee for the work that they do also. Any other discussion? Is there anyone else? And again, there'll be a public hearing, not in two weeks, but our first meeting in April. Okay? Please.
I just wanted to clarify. I think the public hearing is going to be 30 days after. So it would be the 26th.
Watch your Muskegon Chronicle. It'll be posted there, and you can go on to the city's website and find it there when it's announced. There was someone else in the back that wanted to speak on this? Please step forward. Name and address, please, and welcome.
My name is Wilma Collins, and I represent one of the CDBG, and the agency is healthcare. Healthcare is an outreach ministry that we actually go where the people that fall through the cracks, we are the one to go on the high rises. We're the one to go in the school. We're the ones to go in the senior centers. We go to pharmacy. People who actually score high, we have a direct line that we can get them signed up with some type of insurance and get them under some type of a program. Yes, the money you give us, we really appreciate. When people ask, "How can we do it free?" We can say, "The city find us." And they say, "The city find you to do this free?" We say, "Yes, they do." We have so many people that we have helped that would have probably been in ER, but because we were able to catch high blood pressure, diabetes, and get them under some type of a program. $3,500 means a lot to us. You might say it's small, but every little bit that you give us, from the year, years, and years, we have done a whole lot with it. We have serviced over 10,000 people per year, and I just wanted to say, we thank you for what you have done in the past, and we're looking forward, but we know the people that are low-income, that fall through the cracks, we are there for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, thank you for what you do. Is there anyone else? Any other discussion, commissioners? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Warmingston?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasneski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, please.
Civil Service... Oh, excuse me. Civil Service Budget Adjustment, City Manager. Summary request: To authorize an increase in the civil service budget in the amount of $10,000. This amount should carry the civil service operation... This amount should carry the civil service operation into the middle of next month and provide the Civil Service Commission additional time to consider options for the future direction of the operation. This action is necessary due to the rate of spending in contrast to the original budgeted allocation. Staff recommendation: To approve the proposed budget adjustment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Galron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the proposed budget adjustment regarding the civil service.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Galron, supported by Commissioner Carter, to approve the proposed budget adjustment for the civil service budget. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Spataro.
Yes. I will not be voting in favor of this motion, and I just want to express why. I mean, we all have our own opinion, we all do what we feel best. From my position, we set this budget not quite a year ago, it took effect July 1st, and, you know, this day was known to be coming. And up to this point, the Civil Service Commission is not taking that, I think, seriously. You know, and it's unfortunate that we've got to this point, but alls I can say is, 10 years ago, we had 85 more people working at City Hall than we do now. And, you know, this is a department that has been untouched for a very long time, and that's just the financial reality of what we're having to live with, with the state revenue sharing situations, property tax valuations, and so on. That's just reality. So I'm not in favor of this. I think they have to make some tough decisions and perhaps, you know, look at some of the alternatives that have been presented to move forward. So, thank you, Danny.
Thank you. Commissioner Carter.
I will be voting for this, but I echo the remarks of Commissioner Spataro. I just hope within the next, what, 30 days, that they come up with some kind of plan. Nothing's been done, as Commissioner Spataro said, in that department to try to alleviate or make the budget work longer than it has. But I will vote in favor of this, but I will not vote in favor if it comes back for another 30 days. Because I feel that, as Commissioner Spataro said, it's been almost a year, they've known about this, and they've done nothing to try to address the budget situation, the dollar amount. So, thank you.
I think the Commission understands or knows that the Civil Service Commission has been looking at alternatives to the current arrangement, and I have been assisting them to the extent that I can. And the main alternative that they're looking at is a cooperative effort, or cooperative arrangement with another public agency. And if that is successful, then, and you approve of it, then they would want to contract with that agency for those human resources services. But again, that would come back to you, and we're hoping that we can accomplish that within the next certain days, and that's why I've made the request ahead.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Wiesniewski.
No.
Commissioner Carter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galron.
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro.
No.
Mayor Wilmington.
No.
Commissioner Wieringo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other business, Commissioners? Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. In light of, you know, discussion earlier in this meeting, and the announcements we've been seeing coming out of Lansing, particularly from the Governor's Office, we've had a little spill over here, in case you're wondering what's going on. I just think it's important to put out there that, you know, we have been making tough decisions for a long time. This city is financially sound through tough economic times, through repeated and relentless cuts in revenue sharing. And quite honestly, the tenor of the debate that's taking place, that somehow all of this is the fault of employees wanting too much, I think is unconscionable and needs to be addressed. Healthcare costs, for example, are not the fault of employees. These were not gold-plated healthcare plans when they were initiated. And over the last decade, we've switched carriers, we've raised premium co-pays, we've done everything, we did the health and wellness thing tonight, we have done a number of things to try to get these costs under control, and yet despite the fact that we have 85 fewer employees than we did a decade ago, we're paying twice as much for healthcare. That's not the fault of the remaining employees. That's an industry that's cost structure's completely out of control and disconnected from financial reality, because there's nobody else in this country that can have double-digit price increases, year after year after year, without some sort of consequence from their customers. Our only option is to either stick more of the cost to the employee or not carry the coverage at all. And that's an untenable situation. And whoever is to blame, and there are many, many causes to that, I don't think blaming the employees is appropriate, and I think it's got to stop. We've got to look at the overall cost structure, we've got to look at where these costs are coming from, and stop pointing our finger at individuals and saying, "Well, gee, if you just made a little less, Mr. Fireman, if you just made a little less, Ms. Police Officer, then, you know, everything would be wonderful." And I just don't think that's true, and I don't think that's fair. And, you know, I've just, I've reached the point where I've had it, and I felt like I had to say something. Now, we've made hard decisions here, we're going to make some more. I suspect we'll have fewer employees this time next year than we do now, unless something changes radically from what we're seeing out of Washington and Lansing. But to sit there and say, "That's the fault of our hard-working, dedicated employees," it's got to stop. It's got to stop, and that's a message that I share with our representatives in Lansing at every chance I get. So I just had to get that off my chest. I think it's worth saying, I think it's worth repeating, and I think when we go to the legislative conference, or anybody who's going that in April, and when we have opportunities to talk to our representatives, we need to say, "Hey, we're in this together. Let's stop picking people and bashing them when this isn't their fault." Thank you.
And I'm assuming those remarks were aimed towards Lansing, not towards this Dallas?
Absolutely. Unless you're proposing the text.
I just wanted to make certain. No, I'm not testing to that. Is there any other new business? Commissioner Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to just announce that the countywide youth forum is being organized, and we will be meeting March 31st, right here in the chambers, at 5:30. So we welcome any of you to come out. We plan to get our young people together, and we plan to address the needs out there in the community. So if you want to come in and be a part of this, we welcome you. That would be March 31st, 5:30, here in the chambers. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address the Commission tonight? Okay. Yeah, I was going to get this guy, but I thought he should be able to listen.
Hi, my name's Diane Foster, 135 Ottawa Street, Muskegon, Michigan. I want to thank you all for the hard work you do. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the ordinances that you voted on tonight. I wanted to know, or I needed to be clarified, are you guys, have you decided that only one caregiver per building is allowed to do this? Is that what part of the ordinance was about?
Right, yes.
So there will be no community grows? There will not be people allowed to grow communal in one building together?
As the ordinance stands right now, correct.
Then I have to have something to say. When you put an ordinance like industrial buildings, those buildings will have to be cleaned, some of them have toxic waste, some of them have a lot of problems that will have to be rectified before people could use them. They're expensive buildings to use, so basically you are, one caregiver with five patients couldn't possibly sustain one building, ever. It would be so expensive, it would not be worth their while. So actually, you've enacted a law that will not enable anybody except patients to grow in their homes. So I am not sure that's fair, especially when three years almost of law's been in effect, and there's a lot of people who've already set these homes up to grow for businesses. So I suspect that it's going to create quite a problem in the future if everyone who already has a business started has to tear it down, and if nobody can go together to rent these buildings, they won't be able to afford it. So you've pretty much kind of abolished this business, in a way, for people, and their ability to grow for their patients. And my suggestion is that you might want to rethink a little bit about the communal grows. And I mean, one person can control it, and rent it out, can own the building, but several people can help sustain that business. Like I said, this lasts three years in effect, and you have a lot of people that have already spent a lot of money, hundreds of thousands, some of them, and in their own homes. And they've spent money restructuring their whole homes to sustain a business like this. So I suspect it's going to create quite a problem. And I know that you could probably draw the line here and say, "Anybody from this point on can't do it," but the people that are already doing it, it sort of, you know, infringes on what they've already been doing. And I just wonder if there isn't a way to grandfather the ones that already have their cards and are already doing this. They come in, they show you, they've been doing this for some time, they can still be regulated and still have the license or whatever it is you're expecting them to do, but I'm just miffed at people in their own homes that have reconstructed them and spent so much money. I just, when they realize what's happened here, they're not going to be too happy. So, and I just want to point out that I know you're working on this, and we're all, you know, trying to mull through this, but I just think that there's maybe some grandfathering that's going to need to be done, so that there are people that are not at hundreds of thousands or thousands and thousands of dollars worth of loss, because they're going to have to tear these down and take it somewhere else or not at all. They're in a total loss now. So anyway, that's what I wanted to ask you to consider, maybe a grandfather clause into this, like we talked about working this out through time. But some people aren't going to have much time if this law goes into effect or ordinance, and then they're not allowed to grow. I mean, just, okay, today we can't grow, and they've got this grow going over. So just so you know, there's a lot of people out there already doing this, because the law said they could. So I'm just forewarning you that some people probably are going to be very upset, and I thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I? Because that same question came up when we did the first reading on this topic, and obviously it bears repeating, because it's come up again. There is nothing in the statewide referendum that gave you permission to set up a commercial activity in a residential zone in your own home. That's not there, it did not override local zoning to allow for that. And there is no way that regardless of what the commercial activity is, that we would allow something of this intensity to be conducted in single-family residential zones and buildings constructed as single-family homes. You know, so if that's what people are expecting, that's not going to happen. And we owe that to the people who just want to have a quiet, stable place to live, not to allow commercial activity in the house next door to them. So, you know, I think people need to move past that. This is a commercial activity, it is regulated as a commercial activity. Through much deliberation and nine months' worth of research and efforts on the part of our staff to come up with this proposal that we've adopted, this is where we feel it's appropriate for this commercial activity to be conducted. And, you know, I would suggest if you're committed to this as a business, follow the rules, and you won't have any problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on.
Hi, this is Foster, 135 Ottawa Street, Muskegon. I think that, I'm not trying to argue with the fact that you guys needed to do some regulating or make some ordinances. I'm saying that when you put caregiver on, when they put the word caregiver on this program, it kind of changes things, because if you look and see, and look at regulations for caregivers in the state of Michigan or the federal government, there are none. Not really. They're really more federally run than state-run. So when you put the word caregiver, you changed all of this from any kind of manufacturing. And also, Jennifer Granholm gave people permission to put small businesses in their home. This is a small business, so, in case you didn't know, it's not going to be a large business, because it's not designed to be one. So I just want you to understand, I do understand ordinances, not trying to fight with you about it, but people already have done this. I know you've been looking at this for a few months, but this has been in effect for almost three years. So you have to address the people that already are doing this, not the ones that are going to. Thank you.
I guess my response to that would be is if they did it within the city limits of the City of Muskegon, they didn't come and ask permission of the city and go through the proper channels to get it done at this point in time. Is there anyone else that would care to address the Commission? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Gary DeCamp. I live at 475 West Webster. And on a note of ordinances, I guess my question to the Commission is, whose role and responsibility is it to enforce the ordinances?
Well, it depends on the ordinance and what it...
Basically, specifically, I'm talking about solid waste.
Solid waste, mom, when the public works.
Issue at hand is, I drive down Muskegon every single day on Muskegon Avenue, and I witnessed litter along the road three weeks straight. How long is too long? Pretty soon that stuff blows in the yards, and we have to deal with that. And I've made numerous calls, actually contacted a few of you folks, and I'm still not seeing resolve. I don't know where to turn.
Are you talking about in one particular yard, or are you just talking about litter in general?
In general. Like I say, the issue on Muskegon Avenue, I noticed today it was finally taken care of, but I drove by it three weeks straight, big old couches and all kinds of litter alongside the road. I mean, this is a road that people enter into... I mean, this is a road that people enter into our city. And we're trying to beautify, we actually came to this area four and a half years ago with the thought of rejuvenation of the downtown area, and I don't think we're supporting that very well. And I guess I'm looking for support or what we could do to help combat that.
Mr. Mayor, I would say that, you know, if you just got things blowing around, I mean, unfortunately, this is the time of the year that all the stuff that was sitting by the snow is popping up, and our regular street cleaning schedule starts up, what, in April?
April.
So, but larger items, I mean, that's one thing, but if you're talking about somebody dumped something like a couch on the terrace...
Look, I know what he's talking about. It looked like an eviction.
I don't know what your direction you folks come in town, but I don't...
Right. No, I know what you're talking about there, and that's something that, because we don't have enough staff to go around and patrol eyes on, we really rely on neighbors to call in and report that, because that'll expedite the cleanup. So if you see that kind of thing, if you would call it in, you know, you can call your commissioner...
Call me.
Call Department of Public Works. I mean, but let somebody know so that we can start the process to get it cleaned up for you. Because otherwise, it may sit there a while before it gets documented and properly disposed of.
Well, we want to, we want to support, we try to support the area, and we want to see it cleaned up if we can. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very much.
So anyone else? This evening, we've been fortunate to have one of our county commissioners, Scott Plummer, be here and sit through the meeting. Scott, I want you to get up and...
Thank you. This is Mayor. Our county clerk was nice enough to bestow this proclamation that the county did, if I may read it.
Certainly.
Bear with me, I wasn't playing on this. It's County, Muskegon Proclamation, National County Government Month, April 2011, serving our veterans, armed forces, and their families. Whereas the nation's 3,068 counties provide a variety of essential public service to communities serving more than 300 million Americans, and whereas Muskegon County takes seriously the responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, safety of its residents in sensible and cost-effective ways, and whereas Muskegon County honors and thanks our residents who have served this country through military service, and whereas county government delivers many important services to Americans, veterans, military service members, and their families, including physical and mental health, housing, employment, and justice. And whereas the National Association of Counties is the only national organization that represents counties, governments, in the United States, and whereas the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to actively promote their own programs and services, and whereas Muskegon County and the National Association of Counties are working together to restore the partnership among all levels of government to better serve American communities, now therefore be resolved that Muskegon County Board Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2011 National County Government Month, encourages all Muskegon County officials, employees, educational institutions, and residents to participate in the celebration activities. And thank you. And I would also like to say one thing, Mr. Spataro. I couldn't agree with you more about our employees, city, county, everywhere else, are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks for the job you do, too. Anyone else? Commissioner Carter.
Seeing no one, motion to adjourn.
Favor. Thank you.